Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the October 17th, 2024, meeting of the City of Nashua Planning Board. Madam Secretary, can we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Dontes, Mike Peterson, Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Dan Hudson, Scott Leclair, Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Cameron Green, and Alderman Klee.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from the October 3rd, 2024 Planning Board hearing. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review the minutes and is willing to make a motion on their acceptance? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion?
At least not here, so I will not.
Certainly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? And abstention? Alderman Klee and Mr. Hirsch? Very good. Next item on the agenda, communications. Scott, anything that came in after we received our packets this week?
Nothing relevant that would impact anything tonight, no.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, report of Chair, Committee, and Liaison. I have nothing. Ms. Harper?
Only that the next historical commission meeting has been canceled only because there are no new cases.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. Before we start hearing our regular cases this evening, I would like to go over the Planning Board procedure. The procedure of the meeting is as follows. After the legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision plan is read by the Chair, the Board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the Board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given the time to present an overview and description of their project. The applicant shall speak to whether or not they agree with recommended staff stipulations. The Board will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff. The Chair will then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or with concern of the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This is the time to ask questions that they may have regarding the plan. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The applicant will then be allowed a rebuttal period, at which time they shall speak to any issues or concerns raised by prior public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the Board will resume the public meeting, at which time the Board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. The Board asks that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and try not to repeat what has already been said. Above all, the Board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances. Thank you for your interest and courteous attention, and I would kindly request that you please turn off your cellphones or set them on vibrate or silent, please. All right. First item on the agenda, under Old Business Site Plan, case 824-0070. Project located at Eight State Street. This was tabled from the September 5th, 2024 meeting. Would any member of the Board like to make a motion as to untabling this item, resuming the public hearing? Mr. Hirsch?
Motion to take it off the table.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Hirsch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Would I would ask, just because the Board has heard quite a bit of testimony on this application previously, perhaps if the applicant's representative wished to speak, perhaps give a brief overview of any substantive changes or modifications that have occurred since you were last here? And we'll kind of go from there.
Yes. Bernie Temple, working with John Roki and Eight LLC. And since the last meeting, we left, we tabled it at the request of the Board. And you wanted to see some additional architectural renderings and try to break up that facade facing Domain Street. We provided that with a architectural plan here showing, you know, the color scheme on Eight State, on Domain side of the building. Dark gray up top and lighter at the bottom. We talked about additional landscaping as a request from some of the butters on Domain. We've added additional landscaping. We've added some Norway spruce, which is a faster growing tree. We upped the size basal area so that they'll be 10 to 12 feet tall at the initial planting. We've moved and around worked with staff to move plantings and the utilities, so there aren't any utility conflicts with the landscaping. And we talked about a fence, and we've added a split rail fence that runs the full length of the property in roughly 30 feet up each side, so that there can be absolutely no cut through of traffic. That's pretty much anything new. You know, we've addressed all the other comments, staff comments, fire comments. That's pretty much where we're at.
Thank you. Were there any other site plan-specific modifications with regard to circulation or anything of the like?
No. Nothing's changed since the last submission.
Okay. Thank you. Open it up to questions from the Board? Alderman Klee, please.
Thank you. When you say the split rail fence, so that's the entire length of the?
Entire length of Domain frontage.
Okay.
And then up the sides.
And up the?
Approximately 30 feet.
Okay. So that prohibits them from?
It'll go right up to the Knox Box Fence, the fire fence, fire truck fence.
Okay. Thank you.
Other members of the Board? Oh, Mr. Hirsch, please.
How many feedback from Domain is the actual building? I can see it on the site plan.
I'm gonna have to look at that.
Next is like 35 feet higher, so?
The building is?
I see 30 feet.
It's a 30-foot setback, and it's inside the, you know, it's on the inside of the setback at least, hard to tell from the plan, but at least three or four feet, so.
Certainly. Other members of the Board? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none at this time, I will open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public tonight that would like to speak in opposition or with concern to this application? If so, please come up to the podium. Just identify yourself for the record. State your name and address. Okay. Seeing none. Do we have any Zoom participants this evening?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay. All right. Seeing none? Before we close this, I'll poll the Board one more time. Any further questions of the applicant? All right. All right. I will close the public portion of this. We'll go into deliberation. My personal opinion on this application, I believe that the applicant has been amenable to listening to both Board comments as well as concerns of a butters. I think we have sort of a unique situation here just because of the zoning, where you do have a combination of, you know, sort of industrial, commercial, mixed with residential. I don't know if there was a perfect solution, but in my opinion, again, I think the applicant showed a real willingness to try to address the concerns that were raised. And I would feel satisfactory moving forward with this, but obviously I'd like to hear thoughts from other members of the Board. Alderman Klee?
Thank you. As an Alderman, I find myself sometimes sitting here having to do land use rules, and I have to abide by them. And so it kind of goes against the grain sometimes of wanting to go with what I feel is of the people. But one of the nice things is that I can do, I want the out that I have sometimes is that if it has a negative effect. And I oftentimes feel that some of these mixed use can have a negative effect. And I speak to planning often, and I say, when we have these mixed use, I get anxiety that they're gonna have a negative effect. My inclination at one point was to say, mixed use does not work. But the owner of this property has continued to come forward and has continued to, as you put, be amenable. Those that had spoken against it have not come forward, have not said no. So I appreciate the work that you have done. So I am going to vote in favor of this. And I do appreciate it. I do appreciate the work that you have done. I appreciate those that spoke against. I do appreciate that because by you coming forward and saying, "This is going to have a negative effect on my property. This is going to have a negative effect on my life," pushes us to push the other party to try to do something better. So you need to speak up. And I tell this to anybody who's listening. We all need to hear from you because we don't know. We sit here and we have to do the land use codes. So we do have that little wiggle room. And I don't mean to stand here and preach, but I tell people, don't just sit there and grumble. You need to come forward and you need to speak up. So I appreciate both parties, and I appreciate everybody willing to do what they can. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Klee. Mr. Varley, please.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to echo some of the comments that you both made. I mean, I think there were two specific issues that we had asked the applicant to, you know, to address further. At the last meeting, you know, one was doing something to ensure, you know, that there wouldn't be, you know, cross-access here. And they, I think, accomplished that with the fence. And we also asked them to take a harder look at the landscaping and to provide, you know, some elevations to sort of better illustrate that. And I think they've done a pretty good job with that as well. And Alderman Klee, I appreciate your point about the, you know, the challenges when you've got these mixed zones. But I would also note, this is a pretty well-established mixed zone, where you obviously have lots of other sort of light and industrial, you know, uses already existing in relation to this neighborhood. And I think the applicant's done a good job of, you know, presenting a plan that's gonna fit well within the sort of existing, you know, side of that use, but also, you know, aesthetically look, I think, you know, appropriate in terms of, you know, what the residential neighbors have to look at. So I think they've done a pretty good job, given the circumstances.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Varley. Other members of the Board? Larry? Maggie? Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion, suppose the first action we should take is with respect to the granting of the waivers. Two were sought with respect to showing existing conditions on adjacent parcels. And again, a second one with respect to architectural standards. Any member of the Board willing to make a motion regarding the granting of the waivers? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would make a motion to grant the following two waivers. So the first part of that motion would be to grant a waiver from Section 190-279 EE of the site plan requirements, to waive the requirement to show existing conditions on adjacent parcels, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship. And given the specific circumstances, the granting of the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then additionally, to grant a waiver from Section 190-172, to waive certain architectural standards as reflected in the plan. And again, on the basis that strict conformity with that regulation would pose an unnecessary hardship on the applicant and that, under the specific conditions and circumstances here, that granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Thank you. There is a motion by Mr. Varley to approve the waivers. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Adam, I might make one briefly. Just would you be willing to modify your motion to explicitly state that the Board utilized the specified RSA and city ordinances in the staff report by which to make those determinations on waivers?
Certainly. So I will just amend my motion to express reference to the specific statutory criteria, RSA 674-362N, RSA 674-442, or sorry, 3E, and Section 190-148D as the standards governing the granting of those two waivers.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have an amended motion. Is there a second on that? Mr. Hirsch? All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Following through on that, would any member of the Board be willing to make a motion with regarding to granting final site plan approval for this application? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just before I make that motion, just to confirm with staff, there's no updates in terms of the, any subsequent correspondence from city staff here? These are all the correct communications we're referencing?
Correct.
Thank you. So with that, I would make a motion to grant final site plan approval with respect to Old Business, case number 824-0070, Eight State Street LLC. And that would be with a finding that the application does meet requirements outlined in Section 190-146D, including the mixed use overlay review criteria in Section 190-23E1. And that that would be subject to the following, or I'm sorry, subject to the subsequent conditions identified in paragraphs A through I of the staff report.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Harper? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, under New Business Site Plan, case 824-0140. Property located at 25 through 27 Greeley Street. This project, the Board never fully accepted jurisdiction over this. So I would ask the Board, has any member of the Board had an opportunity to review this application and is willing to make a motion regarding the Board accepting jurisdiction? Ms. Harper?
Yes. I'd like to recommend or make a motion that the Board take jurisdiction of case 824-0140.
All right. Is there's a motion by Ms. Harper? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. We have jurisdiction. If you're here, sir, if you're the owner or acting on behalf of the owner, come right up. Identify yourself for the record, please, and tell us a little bit about your proposal.
Good evening. My name is Mark Berkovich. I'm living at 41 King Street. I need site plan for 25, 27 Greeley Street. I needed to convert the property from three unit to four unit. The building was built probably 1836 was built four unit. It is still four unit structurally. Previous owner converted it to three units. He decided to join two of them. He lived in them, I believe, because he wanted to save on taxes. So nothing really has to be done, but the building is old. It needs to be renovated. I need to spend lots of money, and I need the approval to do it. And this is why I need site plan.
Okay.
I guess this is it.
That's it? Okay. Well, thank you. Questions from the Board on this application? Mr. Varley? Oh, please. Okay. Yeah, Pat, I'm sorry. I saw you after him, so.
No, no. After him. Yes, please.
Can you just speak, given that this is a site plan approval, can you speak to whether there, whether and what, you know, exterior site plan work you're doing as opposed to sort of the structural work?
There is no structural work needed. As I said, it's still four unit structurally. There are even sites of four kitchens, even though it was partially demolished. But the work that has to be done, I obviously need to do some, not myself, of course, plumbing, electricity work. Some doors needs to be fixed and stuff, and I need to make it four units instead of three units. So, I mean, minor or major, I don't know. Renovation things should be done, but it is the same building. Nothing has to be done with the building itself, with the structure.
Right. But just to clarify, you're not proposing to do landscaping work or, you know, or doing anything with the, you know, the existing pavement?
Well, I was asking for parking because that's a big issue. I don't know if it can be resolved, and this is a big question because almost 200 years old building, they didn't have any parking needs. We used to park on the other side of the Greeley Street. It was kind of assigned to us. I'm not sure why these parking spaces were too, like, nobody can park there any longer, even though it's parking spot. So parking is an issue. Yes. I agree. I wanna do something with the parking, but frankly, I don't know what has to be done with the parking.
Alderman Klee, please.
Thank you. I'm at a loss with this. So I do look at this. I do see the, this is gonna go from a three unit to a four unit. And while I understand you say that parking is an issue, you don't know what you're gonna do with parking. If you do put another family in there, parking is going to be an issue, and you're going to have to figure out what you're going to do with the parking. So to say that you don't know and so on, I would say solve the problem of parking before you put in another unit. That would be my first thing to say to you. And when I look at this, I do see that the property next to yours, 31, has a lot of parking. I don't know if you share parking with them, if you've worked out some kind of deal with them. They obviously have a lot of parking next to them. So parking is one of the waivers that you're requesting. You're right. You don't have a lot of parking. I don't even know if you have adequate parking for what you have there now. So to say you don't have parking is a biggie.
We already had this discussion, like, previous.
At the zoning board, I read it, yes.
And I believe I proved it, that the number of parking that I need for one bedrooms is less. At this moment, on the right side of the building, there are two families. One of them do not have a car at all. Another girl don't park there. She kind of don't need it. The family that lives in joint apartment, it's a huge. It was always a problem. There are lots of people living there. There are lots of cars. They would park, they would use any parking that is available, them, their friends, boyfriends, girlfriends. The one that is on the first floor is perfect for some disabled person from Section 8. No parking required. I can find a person who don't have a car. On the second floor, okay, one car, and I can control it. As of now, with this joint thing, it's just out of my control. Because it's always been either a huge family with friends trying to live in the basement or something like this. So at this moment, like, as I said, two one bedrooms have half car. The one that is joint right now have two, but at some point they had four. They just don't have any place to park. They will fill any parking that I give them. So it's basically, even though four is more than three, it's basically other way around. One bedrooms, one bedroom apartment is good for disabled person who don't have a car. And I can find such a person, even though it's more difficult for me, but it is a solution. Although, yeah, I would love to have some parking solution, but I just don't know what to do with it. I don't know how to do it.
I guess one thing I'm not clear on, on the plan, in sort of the northeast corner, it identifies existing parking. Based on aerial photography, it looks like that's actually the front lawn? Are you counting vehicles that park on the front lawn as existing parking spaces? Like, are those your two existing parking spaces?
If you're talking about what tenants do, then it's very difficult for me to do anything. Because, like, the people living there, if I tell them, cannot park anywhere. They have to leave the apartment, actually. They cannot live without it. It's a big family. They cannot live without cars. That's the problem. Like, if we say, you can live there, but you cannot have cars, how would they go to work? How would they survive in this world? If it can work, if you allow, I believe site plan now has only one car parking there. That would be a solution. All the front of the house will be green. One parking will resolve the problem for the new apartment that we are, I hope, to have.
And I can appreciate that. I'm just trying to understand what legal or dedicated spaces do you have presently? Because, again, it says on the application, you're providing two where six are required. I just can't figure out where the two are. Like, because if the two are parking on the grass in the front lawn, I don't, I would argue maybe you don't have the two. Like, do you sort of understand the basis of the question? Like, do you have right now two legal dedicated parking spaces?
I believe I don't have any legally dedicated, allowed parking spaces, unfortunately.
Okay. No, that's.
And it was always a problem. Yes.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm not, I'm just stating this. This is not necessarily a request, but earlier in my life, living in an apartment with my wife, we rented some units. You know, we were the renters. We had vehicles. We were told explicitly, parking is not provided. If you own a vehicle, that's great. We can't tell you to not own a vehicle, but you just can't park it on the premises. Is that anything that you've considered, just having some sort of restrictive covenant in the lease that?
I can consider to doing it, but again, with one bedroom, it's possible. With, I don't even know how many bedrooms are there. It's a huge families living there. It's like, I don't know what kind of family will be there without cars at all. So I'm asking for one car parking in the site plan. It was changed, actually. That would be, it is something for me. One apartment will have one legal parking.
And that's the problem. I guess going back to. And that, that's the problem. I guess going back to, to my original line of question, I'm not sure where that one legal spot would be, because it seems like there isn't necessarily a legal parking spot right now. So, I guess, well, different question. The staff report sort of alluded to the fact that, that you, you may have, or you may pursue some sort of agreement with an abutting property. Has that been formalized at all, or is there any, been any real discussions on that matter?
There was, I, I just know that properties around don't have much parking either. We had problems with the people, like, behind Greeley Street, behind my building, there's a property managed by housing. And frankly, when we were using parking on the other side of Greeley Street, they were always trying to park there as well. So, there was always a problem. I believe they don't have enough parking neither. So, it just, the way it is, not much.
I, I think, just speaking for myself, I think one of the dilemmas I'm having here, it, it's not just the fact that you're asking for a parking waiver, because this board has been lenient at times with, with certain parking requirements, or accepted less than is required. I'm having, I guess, some, some difficulty understanding that it, it quite honestly seems to me like you don't have any legal parking now. So, it's, it's not, you have two, and you're, where six are required. It seems like you have zero where six are required, and yet you're claiming all your tenants drive vehicles. So, I'm, I'm having some trouble squaring that concept.
Well, yes. I don't have parking. That's the way the house was built. What can I do? I have what I have. This is, I mean, doesn't have land for parking. And if we do what on the site plan, I believe, can, like, live like this.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Questions from other members of the board? Alderman Klee, please.
I don't know so much it's, it's a question, or it's a comment.
Oh, you're allowed to make either.
Yeah. The, the, the parking in that area, Artillery Lane, currently, there's already an issue. There is a severe issue with Artillery Lane, as far as parking is concerned. That's right in behind that. Greeley Street, Artillery Lane, we, we, parking enforcement is already having a problem. We, we have to put up no parking signs up there, and so on. So, for Mr. Berkovich to, to not have the ability for parking, his, I, I don't know what your, what your current tenants do, other than parking on the grass. You said you have some that have, like, two or three vehicles. Are they currently parked? That's what I'm gonna ask. Are they currently parking on the grass? Is that what they do? Because they, I'm sure they're not parking in the apartments next door, correct?
The tenants that are living in the joint apartment, that I want to separate.
Right.
This is what they do. And they, I believe they just don't have other choice, either to park on the grass or to leave. Once it is converted, I hope to have at least one parking spot, but one bedroom apartments can be used for disabled tenants or tenants without cars. So, what I'm doing will make it better. It will not make it perfect. We still need to think of something. And maybe, like, when I'm asking for one car parking, like, basically where it's not really green at this moment, it's, it's cement there, that would be kind of a solution that I can live with. And again, I, under the apartments, like, two one bedroom apartments right now, there's no issue. Nobody's parking there. With one bedroom apartments, I can do it. It's difficult, but somehow it works. With the apartment that is actually a huge apartment, joint two, families must have the cars, but they cannot live without cars.
May I? Certainly. So, currently, you have three apartments. You have one large apartment and two one bedroom apartments.
Yes.
You want to take the large apartment and break it into two smaller apartments?
Actually, physically, no.
No.
No need to physically break it. It's just right now, because of the legal issue, these two apartments are used by a huge family. So, yeah, I'm breaking it legally. And of course, I will need to remodel it and stuff, but structure, I'm not changing it. It's what I'm saying. There will be one person living in one bedroom, one one bedroom, another one person living in the second one bedroom, instead of huge family that have, what is it, about six people living in there.
May I ask a clar-?
Please.
Can you please describe to me what each apartment, how many bedrooms each apartment will have?
The building, when it's built, was built, it was four one bedroom apartments. Four one bedrooms. I believe that previous owner joined two of them. They're good size. So, they joined, he joined, joined them and lived in both of them. This is how I bought the building. And there are, there's also one very small additional bedroom or office space, but still it's one bedroom. So, he joined two one bedrooms, got this monster apartment that I don't know how many bedrooms are there. And I have to rent it to big families, or sometimes it was friends living together. That's what I'm trying to change.
I'm still confused. May I?
Certainly.
So, in the end, when this is completed, if you got your site plan, you will only have four one bedroom apartments? Is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
So, you will only rent one bedroom apartments. That's it?
Yes.
You will not have, you will not rent an apartment to two people? Each apartment will only have one person in each apartment?
Exactly. That's what I do anyways.
But you said you have a family, so.
In the joint apartment, yes. It's family.
You will not have.
In one bedrooms, it's one person per apartment. Yes. It was always like this. The big apartment had much more people, much more cars than other two apartments.
I guess I'm confused. I'm still confused how that can have a family, and then it goes down to just two.
I, I think if I, so, if I understand correctly, there are four bedrooms in the house total right now.
Four one bedrooms, yeah.
There's, there's, but there's four bedrooms total, adding them up. And there will be four bedrooms, if you were to get this approval, there'll still be four bedrooms. It's just that legally, you would split what is currently a
Yes.
two-bedroom apartment into two one-bedroom apartments.
But the, the issue now is that when we join two one-bedroom apartments, we have a huge apartment that is, I mean, for big family. It's kind of, it's like, one, one bedroom apartment plus another one like this. It's not two bedroom. It's more than two bedroom, because there is kitchen that is used as an apartment, bedroom, and some other space. So, what I'm doing is actually is, number of people that are going to live in there will be less.
Ms. Harper, please.
So, when you're describing the, the two units, are they up and down?
Yes.
Or next to each other?
Up and down.
That are together?
First one, second floor on the right side, first floor and the second floor on the left side.
Okay.
And again, all of them lived in the left side on both apartments, and just joined them legally, without any significant structural changes.
So, how, when you say it's one unit, how are, how are the folks accessing it? Are they only accessing the downstairs unit and then only access?
There are stairs that go up. Yeah. In each, in each side, there are two, are stairs on the right side and on the left side that go from the first floor to the second floor.
So, there's only one set on one side?
Yeah, one stairs on one side, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I, I think what the board is having consternation with is the fact that you can go back even further and look at some of the street view images. I, I see as many as three vehicles parked on the front lawn. And it's, 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 it's not the fact, per se, that you're simply asking for the waiver. There doesn't appear to be a legal place to park any vehicles right now. So, it seems like this is, this is already blighted with, with, with violations. And as benign as adding an additional bedroom may seem, without some restrictive covenant on the parking, I, I don't see, I, I'm struggling with, because it seems like we're de facto approving something that's illegal. Like, I can't, I can't condone parking overnight in perpetuity on, on your front lawn, not just doing it, but doing it with up to three vehicles. This is, and again, I, I understand that this is, the situation may have been hoist upon you, but I, I would also think that as the property owner, you would have some ability by which to enforce some sort of parking restrictions. I, I, you know, it's, it's not our job to govern that situation for you, but I'm, I'm just on its face. I'm really struggling with it. You know, I think it's, it's, it's too oversimplified to state, well, it's already an existing problem. We don't have to do anything about it. I, I think as the landowner, you do have, you do have the, the ability to do something about it. So, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with, with just this on its face. But Alderman Klee, please.
Can I ask staff a question?
Certainly, please.
And this may be just really a bizarre question.
That's fine.
Are they allowed to build, like, a driveway? I don't even know if they have the space, but are they allowed to build a driveway of sorts? I mean, they've, they've got a lawn.
Correct, correct.
Could they build, they, could they build a driveway or a small parking lot to, to be able to put cars there?
There should be space on the left-hand side where he's indicating for two cars.
Okay.
And as long as it's not more than fifty percent of the front yard in a building that has less than five families, then he should be okay at that point.
So, if he were to do something like that, at least he would have some parking.
Right. He'd have some, yeah.
And, and just to clarify that, I mean, the particular image I'm looking at, there's, it looks like there's a car parked on the left and a car parked on the right in this particular photo. Could they have, could the property have a driveway on each side and meet whatever, like, no?
I think it'd be, you know, the two on the left would still keep your green space, and it's a very small lot.
It is.
Yeah, then we'd get into
Right there in that corner, there, yeah.
Other issues potentially. There's also, the thought was to try to put more parking spaces in the front, and you'd actually impact the right of way for the city. It'd be kind of messy.
Be rough with snow. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough spot.
It's right there in that corner.
So, is, is, follow-up with, with Scott, you feel that they, they could construct two legal parking spaces? I, I guess I'm having a hard time on the site plan seeing exactly where those would be. Like, I, I don't see, I don't see proposed parking. I, I see, I see a swath in the northeast corner that says existing parking, but to me, existing parking looks like lawn. So, is that, is that error in the, in the plan, or is that?
Actually, we have two different versions of the plan. We had a previous version that showed the whole front yard paved over, and that obviously didn't work. And then there was an additional version that came out with, with that particular one, but the, I believe the engineer decided to just show existing conditions at this point. But he did have an area, we could draw that up to, you know, amend the plan for that.
Could the applicant request a waiver from the green space requirement? Is that, that's not, that's a site plan issue, not a zoning?
No, the, the open space requirement is in zoning, and that would be a variance.
Okay.
There could also be an issue with flooding, a water runoff into that area.
Yeah, there's not a lot of grass there.
Yeah, no.
I, I, I guess, be, maybe in a nutshell here, and it could just be me, welcome comments from the board if you disagree. Current version of the plan that we're looking at was last respo, last revised on October ninth, and it doesn't show the proposed parking. It basically seems to be an existing conditions plan. So, I, I, I think without knowing the physical layout, it's hard to understand what we're, what we're actually approving, because it's a site plan application, and it doesn't appear to accurately depict what the proposed site plan, or the proposed site would look like. That said, even if it showed those two spots, that might get us, you know, partially along the way. I, I, I think the board, though, you know, if, if the two, if two legal could be shown, the board would still need to consider the actual request of two provided and six are, where six are required. But as of right now, this, the site plan doesn't even show the two proposed. So, I, 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 I find, I find some fault with, with that. But I, 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 I think, I think there's some common themes here, and, and I don't want to make you come back just to come back, but I, it's, it's not entirely clear what's, what's being proposed here. You know, we, we understand, I think now we finally have a firm handle on what's going on in the interior of the building. But I, I don't, I don't know what semblance of a site plan we would actually be voting on if it doesn't show the proposed conditions.
I agree.
Staff, do you have any further input, Sam or Scott, on that?
I, I would say if you don't feel comfortable with what you see, then we'd probably postpone or, and make a decision at that time when we get a plan with showing two parking spaces on the left-hand side. That's what, that's about all we can do on that lot, I believe.
All right. Well, let me ask this, before we, we open this up to the public. Larry, go ahead, please.
Would it be possible to put some parking in the rear of the site? At least it's not the front. Again, I'm, I'm looking at a plan I've known back here.
It's an oval, it's an oval-shaped lot.
Yeah.
No access to it.
They can get back there.
Yeah. And sorry, just to, Scott, to ask this again, but you referred to the two spots on the left, and I understand that there's limitations because of the green space, but is there a reason we couldn't do one on the left and one on the right, and still meet the same?
That would constitute two driveways. There are limitations on driveways, curb cuts for residential sites.
Right. But you can still have two access points, right, as long as you meet the, the limitations on the mouth of the.
Twenty-four feet.
But would, would those expand to four over time, and then would we have a violation? I, I don't, that's not where I thought that.
I'm, I'm asking that only because it would seem to better align with the idea of two units on the left and two on the right.
So, one ninety, one ninety-two talks about location of parking. Any off-street parking on a lot containing five or fewer spaces may not be situated in a front yard unless such parking is located on a driveway no wider than twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four, yeah.
So, I, all right. I, I think, I would, I would like to open it up to the, to the public. But, all right. I think, sir, I thank you for your testimony this evening. We may, we may come back to you, but at this time, I would like to open this up to the public. Are there any members of the public this evening that would like to speak with concern or opposition to this application? Seeing none. Any members of the audience that would wish to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. All right. I think we, we might have a couple of things to, to ask you or your, your survey of record to take a second look at. If you could make a plan revision to show where the two proposed spots would actually physically be located on the plan, that should be the plan of record that, that we're, we're voting on. It would appear that your, your only option, as, as I see it, would be in the front, unless or until you have some shared parking agreement with another nearby landowner. I, I can't compel you to get that, but if that is something within your means to, to obtain prior to returning, I think the board would be interested in knowing that, whether you could get it or whether you could not. Again, I'm not mandating that you do, but if there was any sort of shared agreement that you had with, with, again, any nearby landowners. While we have the opportunity to ask for follow-up items, is there anything else that other members of the board can think of that? Basically, what I'm asking for is, what additional information would we need to vote either ultimately favorably or unfavorably for this application that has not yet been presented to us? Alderman Klee, are you okay? Do you need a, a?
No.
Any further descriptions of the, the proposed units, living units, that is, or?
No. In, in looking through all of this, I, I have No, in looking through all of this, I have no issues with anything. He explained thoroughly what the units are. The parking truly is the only thing that gives me any pause. I have some major, major issues with that, with the location of this building and knowing the parking issues, very, very much so knowing the parking issues in that area.
Okay, understood. So I guess one last chance, other members of the board? I agree with the two points that you've asked for clarification on. Okay, is that all understood, sir? What we would be asking for, for additional information?
Can you speak, sorry, can you speak just a bit into the microphone?
I understand it's all kind of wrong, but again, this building is two hundred years old. And in order for people to live in this building, something has to be, you know, decided on this.
And I would agree with you, and we would like to get to the point where we can make that decision. I think the major, the major technical point, aside from the general parking concern, you know, at large, right now, you have not presented a plan that shows even the two legal parking spaces which you're claiming you can get. So we would need a definitive plan at a minimum showing those two parking spaces. Right now, the plan does not reflect that.
So is it a problem with the plan? Because it was changed. There were two parking spaces on the left, then plan was revised, they send another one. Maybe they just, maybe it's a problem with the plan.
If the latest plan that we see revised on October ninth is the plan of record, that plan does not show what we would need to see. It does not definitively show any, any actual parking, you know, proposed. So right now, on that sheet, that plan sheet, you don't show two legal spaces. It's my understanding, staff, I believe, contends that you can get two legal spaces. The plan presently before us does not show those two legal spaces. So we would need the plan revision. And then the other thing, which I can't necessarily mandate, but if you're able to investigate on your own, again, if there's any possibility of a shared parking agreement with any of your neighbors. If there is not, if you can come back and tell us that, if you can do that, that's great. But at a minimum, we don't have a plan right now. We're not physically seeing where the spaces are spatially in relationship to the street, to the property itself, and, you know, to the surrounding environment. So that's, I think that right there is a reason where no official action can be taken tonight. So what we will do, I would ask a member of the board, if you're amenable to the conditions that are stated for coming back, would like to table this to a date certain. And Sam or Scott, if you could tell me, our next meeting is the November seventh hearing?
Correct.
Would there be room on the agenda to potentially hear this case again?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So if you're amenable to coming back on the seventh?
Absolutely.
With a plan submitted to staff, and obviously staff disseminates it to the board. I think that's.
Get those parking spaces shown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for time and story for.
No, 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 it's okay. Thank you for your presentation and your testimony. So I think we'd be looking for, oh, Alderman Cleese?
I'll make a motion to.
Oh, okay, good. You're way ahead, all right.
I'll make a motion to table until November seventh, to the meeting of November seventh.
Okay, so we have a motion, thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Cleese to table case eight twenty-four dash zero one four zero to the November seventh meeting. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Harper? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion passes. Next item on the agenda, also under new business site plans, case eight twenty-four dash zero one seven four. Owner Marguerite's Place, property located at one zero six Pine Street. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review this application and is willing to make a motion as to whether or not the board should accept jurisdiction? Alderman Cleese?
I'll make that motion to accept jurisdiction.
All right, motion by Alderman Cleese, is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion carries. Mr. Zajak, the floor is yours.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board for the record. My name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, Three Congress Street here in Nashua, here representing the applicant and owner for this project, Marguerite's Place. Also joining me here tonight, we've got a full team. Hannah Stoller, Brian Hall, Tara Ledoux from Marguerite's Place, as well as Ann Ketterer and Steve Laput from Novo Studios, the project architect. We're here tonight seeking site plan approval for a proposed four-story, fifteen-unit building to be located at one oh six Pine Street. I just have a brief presentation to walk through, to discuss the site, the building, after which I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board or public. If you could put up the existing conditions plan, I'll start there, should be sheet two. So the site, as I mentioned, one oh six Pine Street, map eighty-four, lot one thirty-four. It's about a point-one acre site, about ninety feet wide by sixty-eight feet deep. It's located in the RC zone. Direct to butters to the north and south are existing, bless you, multifamily residences. To the west, we've got Pine Street, as well as additional, both single-family and multifamily residences along Pine Street. And to our east, direct to butters would be Marguerite's Place, two existing properties that abut the site to the rear. They are located off of Palm Street, and specifically abutting the back of the existing building is Marguerite's Place existing playground area. The existing building, which was long occupied by Pine Street Motors, is a partial two-story building, approximately sixty-one hundred square feet. I understand it was built in the twenties. Their use there was auto parts and retail, auto part sales and retail. Existing site is non-conforming in a number of ways in the RC zone. First and foremost would be the use that I just mentioned. The structure itself has a two-foot side yard setback where seven feet is the required minimum, one-foot rear yard where twenty feet is required minimum, plus various sheds that are located in the front yard setback and side yard setback. The parking on site, they have really paved across the entire frontage of the site. There are about ten head-in spaces, parking obviously within the front yard setback, which is not allowed. Open space in the RC zone is thirty-five percent minimum required. They only have about seven percent existing on site, really along the sides and the back of the building. Existing building is serviced by public sewer, public water, oil, and overhead electric and telecommunications. So a little bit of history about Marguerite's Place. I'm sure of members of the board are familiar with the organization, but it's certainly worth offering that tonight. As background, Marguerite's Place is a New Hampshire-based nonprofit organization with a thirty-plus-year legacy of empowering families on the transition from crisis to sustainable independence. It was founded by Sister Sharon Walsh and Sister Elaine Fahey. Marguerite's Place was named in honor of Sister Margaret Deuville. I hope I pronounced that okay. The founder of the Gray Nuns of the Sacred Heart. Their mission, as it reads from their website, "Transform the lives of families working to achieve safety, stability, and independence by fostering connection and providing holistic individual and group support offerings, including transitional housing for women and their children, as well as early childhood education and group-based community programs for all." Marguerite's Place acquired the one oh six Pine Street property in October of last year and is proposing this project to help meet the critical need to expand its services in our community. They plan to develop the property to provide these expanded facilities and services, again, for transitional housing and community-based programs for low-income Nashua families. Scott, if you could go back to the master site plan, please. So our project as proposed, first and foremost, we're going to demolish the existing building and site, and in its place, construct a four-story, roughly seventeen thousand, seven hundred square-foot residential multifamily building. And we did go before the zoning board back in July. This property, given the number of existing conformities, non-conformities required a handful of variances. So we asked, and all of those were granted. So for density, we were granted fifteen proposed units, where one is allowed. Front yard setback, seven feet proposed where ten feet is required. Side yard setback, three feet proposed where seven feet is required. Rear yard, again, three feet proposed where twenty feet is required. Floor-to-area ratio, two-point-nine proposed, one-point-zero required, and open space sixteen percent proposed and thirty-five percent required. If you followed some of those numbers, many of those, including the side yard, rear yard setback, and open space, has actually improved upon what's out there now, given the large amounts of pavement. The footprint of this building is roughly forty-two hundred square feet. The existing building is about forty-one hundred square feet, so it's somewhat of a similar footprint. More perimeter open space. We've got a little bit of a unique footprint to accommodate a new transformer pad up along Pine Street. As well, there's kind of a notched-out area on the left side of the building, which is going to be used for trash and receptacle areas to kind of screen those from the street at the lower level. The first floor is going to contain offices for Marguerite's Place staff. That currently, currently their offices are in the Pine Street facilities, as well as some additional community room space. The second, third, and fourth floors will contain a total of fifteen residential units, five per floor. Obvious reason this is organic growth for them, they've got two properties off of Palm Street that they've long serviced their clients and the community from. And so this would be a campus environment. You could see there's connectivity in terms of walkways and gates, and certainly we expect these three properties to operate together. We feel like the residential use and the architectural features are much more in keeping with the residential zone and neighborhood. And it is also worth mentioning in terms of the four-story structure that the RC zone, of course, allows by right, a ten-story, hundred-foot building. So we think this is the right, the right neighborhood, the right zone for this, for this use. In terms of the site, as I mentioned, the, there are ten, I'm sorry, eight head-in parking spaces along Pine Street. Those will be eliminated. In its stead, we're proposing new curbing, sidewalk, building entrances, landscaping, fencing, and building mountain lighted. So I think there's going to be a significant improvement in terms of the aesthetics and that front door view shed from Pine Street. We've also got new utility services, sewer water, drainage, underground electric, telecommunications, to support this new building. We also have new stormwater management, an underground infiltration trench and leaching catch basin up in the front of the site, which will accommodate roof drainage. This will result in a significant improvement as it relates to stormwater compared to the existing condition where there aren't our formal drainage practices. Parking, we've got somewhat of a unique off-site parking approach, which I'll go into more detail in a little bit when I talk about the waiver. Marguerite's Place has executed a lease for ten spaces minimum at Fifty Lemoine Street, which is about a hundred, hundred-twenty feet away from this site. And it's worth noting that that agreement was executed with the same property, the same property owner owns that site that sold them the one oh six Pine Street property. So there's a good relationship there. And by taking the off-site approach to parking, of course, we can maximize the new building footprint and ultimately the services that are being able to be provided within there. I will talk about waivers in a second, but at this time, I'd like to invite Ann Ketterer from Novo Architects to come up and speak briefly to the building design and the architectural elements.
Certainly. If you could just identify yourself from the record, and, sorry, do you have to speak directly into that mic? Feel free to adjust it if necessary.
It's okay. Good evening, my name is Ann Ketterer. I'm an architect and founder of Novo Studio Architects. I'm joined with my partner Steve Laput here this evening, and I'm happy to be here to talk to you about this wonderful project at one oh six Pine Street. Can you hear me okay? All right. Tom did a great job of laying out, sort of showing you what was there and what we're proposing. And as we look at the exterior rendering and the massing of this building, it's important to take a step back and start to really share with you how we got to this building and this design. The project. Is it me? The project is serving three main functions, very critical, important functions. In fact, the reasons for this project are these three functions. Number one, it's providing a much-needed community center. Tom spoke about the mission of Marguerite's Place. Well, we need space to foster that community programming, and so this project will have a small but large enough to accommodate fifty people per the building code, assembly space for gathering. The second is administrative spaces. Currently, Marguerite's Place functions out of what could really be considered a two-bedroom apartment. It's the ground floor of one of their existing buildings. There is one private office that is used by the executive director. There is no conference room. Does this go, did turn off?
I think maybe he just made an adjustment.
I can start shouting if you'd like. Okay, that's all right. So, and there's no conference room. So when one of the staff members needs to have a private call or a private meeting or deal with a walk-in, they have no place to do that. And they function very well under these circumstances, but certainly we can do better. So part of the mission of this building and the goals is to create an administrative space. And when we look at the floor plans, and I don't believe we have them, but the administrative space is on the first floor, and it's incredibly efficient. It is a total of, oh, thank you, thank you, Scott. It would be a one oh one. I don't know if it's in there, because I don't think that floor plans are typically part of the criteria. So I will simply describe it. The administrative space will have four small private offices for each of the directors of the organization for every one of their programming, three group offices to hold up to four people per office, and then two case management offices, which is not something they currently have. So they sort of make do with the director's office when they get a walk-in or have to deal with a client, but this will be two dedicated rooms. One of the rooms will even have a small area for children. And then lastly, it will have a conference room. The conference room will accommodate up to twelve people, which will be really great for board meetings, staff meetings, et cetera. And then the third and most important piece is the component of the residential housing, the transitional housing. One of the things that I learned while designing these units for this particular client is what their spatial needs are. And in the case of Marguerite's Place, they are serving women with small children who are otherwise homeless. I asked them, I said, well, what kind of space do you need? What kind of bedrooms, what kind of beds? Are you putting in queen beds, king beds? They said, no, probably just a twin bed. These families are used to actually sleeping in the same room. And what I learned from the client is that typically, it's a very small child moving in with a mother. Because typically, in abusive circumstances, the abuse really starts to show its ugly face when the child, the first child, normally arrives. And so in these circumstances, the families that Marguerite's Place, these wonderful people are helping, are actually the most vulnerable. They're little children and young mothers. And so we don't need to design huge apartments for really big families. We need to design small, well-placed, safe, welcoming apartments. So when you go to the second, third, and fourth floor, we have five residential apartments. There will be one three-bedroom apartment. The rest on each floor are two-bedroom apartments, the floors repeat, and they're all pretty small. They do, however, have to meet, and they do meet, the criteria of New Hampshire Housing and Finance Authority. There is criteria that will tell an architect what the minimum dimensions for each bedroom, primary and secondary, need to be. We meet that criteria. Without meeting that criteria, we can't get funding. So what this building has done, and even though it looks big for the site, we're actually as efficient as we possibly can be. We've made this as small and as tight as we can in order to fit in and satisfy those three major criteria on the one oh six Pine Street, so. I'm sorry I didn't have floor plans for you, but I hope that you can envision it, and it looks wonderful in your head. And I'd be happy to ask, to take any questions, otherwise I'll turn it back over to Tom.
I think we'll, thank you for your testimony. I'll probably hand it back to Tom, and then the board collectively will have a chance to open questions. So, thank you.
Scott, can you just scroll to the next one? And all I wanted to, the next page, please. As part of the zoning board application, we, Ann and her team, provided kind of a fore and aft. and after. So again, when we talk about the view shed and the improvements and the architectural features of the building, I think certainly that, that picture tells the full story here in terms of that residential use and the front door and the curbing and sidewalk and the sense of arrival, as opposed to, you know, more of the legacy, you know, use of the Pine Street Motors building in that, in that residential neighborhood. At this time, Mr. Chair, I would just like to review the site plan waivers. We did submit two waivers outlined in our letter October fourth. As I typically do, I will not go in detail through, through the first one, which is for existing conditions of adjacent properties, a fairly common waiver. Of course, I'm happy to answer any questions on that. The second waiver is related to the minimum parking requirements and our off-site parking approach, so I would like to speak to that in a little more detail. Again, we did submit a, a fairly lengthy letter as part of that justification, as part of that request. So the request itself is, is a waiver to allow zero onsite parking spaces where a minimum of thirty-eight spaces is required by code. Again, this is looking at the fifteen units based on the one point five minimum per unit, which is, you know, a, a more typical residential unit, as well as the lower floor meeting room and office space as a little more classified as maybe commercial-type space that you would be renting out each of one of those. So that's what results in the minimum of thirty-eight spaces. And so what we'd like to propose is, is a little more of a unique parking approach, where we're going to utilize an off-site parking arrangement to really allow for the maximization of the building footprint and the services provided. And, and a lot of that justification comes down to the unique nature of, of Marguerite's Place and their operations and its clients. So transitional housing for women and their children really lessens the need for that parking requirement. So specifically, it's our understanding that about half of the current residents who own or use, own or use a vehicle, only about half of them have a vehicle, and those that do typically only have one vehicle per unit. And we certainly expect this trend to continue for future clients. And so while there's no onsite parking being proposed, they have entered into a formal lease agreement for ten off-site spaces located off of Lemoine Street, which is only about a hundred and twenty feet away. And those ten parking spaces will be sufficient to meet the needs of the new building. So for instance, we have fifteen units. We think about half will have cars, and they will have one vehicle, so that's seven or eight spaces for those residences, which would actually allow potentially two or three spaces that are left over available for existing staff to utilize. And right now, if you've been over to their Palm Street facilities, parking is extremely tight onsite, and many utilize on-street parking. So we think this off-site arrangement at ten spaces, based on the fifteen units in the building we're proposing, may actually slightly improve parking in that general area on the existing condition against staff being able to utilize those parking spaces. Marguerite's Place, as I said, acquired ten spaces. Those conversations continue with that property owner to potentially expand that moving forward. And I can also share that they continue to pursue additional off-site parking arrangements in the area, including at the nearby church. Furthermore, one of the primary reasons that they chose to purchase this property, in addition to the fact that it's right next door to their current facilities, is due to its location in the urban environment and close proximity to the city and downtown corridor. It lies within a half a mile of Main Street, and oftentimes we try to look at the walk score for a property to see, you know, how walkable it is. And this site received a score of eighty-five out of one hundred, which is classified as very walkable, most errands can be accomplished by foot. So we believe that this granting of this waiver will not be in contrary to spirit and intent of the city's land use code regulations, given certainly the unique nature of the residential use, the walkability of the site. Marguerite's Place, as we mentioned, has operated in this area for over thirty years very successfully, and our testimony is that the provided ten off-site parking spaces is sufficient for their needs for the new building. Lastly, it's just worth mentioning, with the existing building, in terms of what they provide and what somebody could come in and continue to use that as an auto part shop. So they only provide eight onsite parking spaces with head-in spaces, where a minimum of twenty-plus spaces are required, minimum for such a use. So we would argue that the proposed use has much less of a parking need than would potentially be required by the continued use of that building as an auto parts shop. So in summary, Mr. Chair, we believe the site plan complies with the spirit and intent of the Nashville Land Use Code. We think this is a redevelopment that's going to be a great use for this property, a use that is much more consistent with the abutting uses, with the RC residential zone compared to the existing auto parts shop. And as we mentioned, will address really a critical need in our community by allowing this longstanding organization the opportunity to expand the great work that they've been doing for thirty-plus years. So with that, I've reviewed the staff report. We're agreeable to all the conditions as written, and we seek your approval tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Before I open it up to the board, I, I think one item you didn't touch on, I don't know if it's the end-all, be-all, but there's a note in the staff report about garbage pickup. Did you care to briefly mention anything about refuse and how that'll be handled or...
I don't want to call it a hot topic, but I know it's come up with a handful of projects recently. I think I had heard officially from Division of Public Works Solid Waste that five or six units is the cutoff for public bins. So we recognize that. I think we had planned to request that. As part of these units, these residents are encouraged to be independent, so to, on the Palm Street properties, they physically have their own bins and they roll them out to the curb and roll them back. But we recognize with this facility that there will need to be a private curbside pickup, so there'll likely be some shared bins, again, in that location on the side of the building. And so those will have to go out to the curb to be picked up by, by private contractors. So we recognize that.
Okay. And it, it wouldn't be cumbersome or overly cumbersome to place a larger refuse container? Do you think you have sufficient space to, to do that?
Correct, yeah. It's a similar, a lot of these types of facilities has more roll, roll-away type, you know, dumpsters that would be shared on the side of the building and then rolled out when they're ready to be picked up.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to get that one out of the way. I'm sure the board has more insightful follow-up questions, but members of the board care to follow up? Alderman Klee, please.
It's my typical question, parking. I, I, I do see that you, you did say the off-site parking of the ten, ten spaces, and I do appreciate that you, you went to that, to that effort, so, but I do have to ask this question. You said leased. How long is that lease? Is it a, is it a long-term lease? I know you said you're working on other, other leases, but is it a long-term lease?
Yeah, my, my understanding is that it's a, it's a five-year lease to start, but there's going to be continuing provisions and discussions going forward. And I actually think the Marguerite's Place team thinks that they'll be able to acquire additional parking moving forward, but that is the initial term that was, that was discussed. And I think they have maybe one, one or two spaces at the church that they are pretty close to, but like I said, they, they recognize that they're working to try to shore up some additional spaces in the area.
No, please, understand that this, this would not preclude me from, from approving this because it looks like you, you've looked at all other options, and I'm not comparing this to the, to a previous case that we, we've talked about because it looks like you, you're moving forward, you're looking at all options, so I, I appreciate that. And I appreciate that you've, you've been looking at other ones, but to the, to the chair's question about trash pickup and so on, so you would not be able to use some type of, like waste management kind of dumpster type of thing where you would have them come onsite and be able to pick it up? You would have to do mobile kind of rollaways where you would, it wouldn't be city pickup, obviously, but you would have to do some kind of contracting where they would have to, to roll it out? You wouldn't have the ability to have some kind of dumpster type thing?
Correct. I think just physically from a space requirement and from a maneuverability requirement, that section of Pine Street is one-way. So I think that would be, given the, I, I talked about, I guess, a little bit maybe of the lighter intensity of, of the units themselves, so I think they're expecting less than normal trash generation, generation. So I think that roll-away solution would be, would be fairly sufficient, and I know, I believe that's how like the Bronstein Apartments project is, is approaching trash in terms of internal and then roll out when, when it's trash day by the private contractor, yes.
Okay, okay. So that was, that was my only question, so thank you.
All right. Other members of the board? All right. Mr. Zajak, seeing none at this time, I did want to give the public an opportunity to chime in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public this evening that would wish to speak in opposition or with concern? Come right up, take your time, just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Maria Molina. I lived at ninety-seven Pine Street for twenty-four years, so we struggle all in the area with the parking. So what they are selling is a beautiful dream that are going to be a nightmare for all of us and for them. Because when winter came over here, they don't want to walk a mile, half a mile to go to their apartment. And we, all of the resident, we're going to have really hard time. We already have hard time. Like in my case, I have four parking spots in my driveway. But other than that, I never find parking when somebody come to visit me because there's no parking. For their project, that's beautiful project, to work, they're going to need to build on the ground, underground parking. That's the only way. Oh, buy all the houses in the area, but that doesn't going to work. It's a beautiful dream that are going to become a nightmare for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead, sir.
My name is Steve Picard. I live at ninety-seven Pine as well, and what my wife has said is the parking is slim to none all the time. My concern is in the six months to a year that they're going to be building the project, you're going to have twenty, thirty trucks there per day, guys, dumpsters, big trucks, contractors. Where are these, where are these men going to park? Where are they going to unload their tools? How are they going to be able to get in and out of the building? That's going to go on for the six to ten months, and then after that, you're going to have twenty, thirty cars from them, from the residents, from the employees. If they have a function, they're going to have more. Where are all these people going to park? You know, I, I, I don't think ten parking spaces is anywhere near enough. I think that's all I have to say, it's just the parking, you know, is our biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly.
Hi, my name is Bobby Jane Plummer. I live at one oh three Pine Street. Drop the mic. So I came the last time for a parking, and unfortunately, I'm not sure why. I was the only one that received a notification. So nobody on my street got notification of this going on. They missed the whole first meeting. I was the only one that came, and I did talk to my neighbors this time. There was a lot of people there that are very upset about this. I'm not sure, I, I understand exactly where they're coming from. I feel the same way. It's a nightmare now. I don't understand how you think this is going to work. And then the trash? The trash sounds crazy, and I'm not quite sure about the sewer you were talking about or the water. Where is that going? So, I don't know, because right now, the, right in front of that is the storm drain. So are they filling it with the sidewalks going? How is that being addressed? So, those are the things that I see as an issue. I know I brought it up last time, and you have ten parking spots, but even if you don't have a car, you still have to get groceries, you still have to do laundry, you still have to bring your kids to school. Those are all vehicles that are coming there. So have to keep that in mind. It's, even though they're not parking, they're still parking everywhere. They park across my driveway. The apartment right next to it has no parking. So you have six apartments there with no parking. Now you're going to put fifteen apartments, four offices, and then a function room with ten parking spots and two down the street at a church? I'm not sure what church you're talking about that's close, but, so I, I agree with her. I think maybe you should go up one more level, put parking underneath it, but ten parking spots, not going to work. So, I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry if I broke your mic.
It still works, we could hear you, so. Other members of the public that would like to speak in opposition or with concern?
Hello, my name's Kevin Sullivan. I also live at one oh three Pine Street. I'm actually a bus driver, so I see a lot of the problem currently on Palm Street with all the parking, and I actually used to do some work there as a plumbing, and we never had room to park when we were there for doing that also. I agree, I mean, mainly your biggest problem with the whole thing is going to be parking. That's what everybody's going to be complaining about. And Pine Street Motors, I grew up in the house at one oh three Pine Street. I hung out with Dave and all them. They had the eight spots currently that they're saying, but they also own that spot where they have twenty parking spots or whatever behind my mom's house, which is on Lemoine Street. So they had an issue with parking, and they already had eight spots plus all the spots that they have that they're renting out to them, which he also rents to other buildings. So those spots are already spoken for because other landlords already rent the spots. This parking lot that they're saying they have eight spots, they're already accounted for, all of them. All the spots currently, like they're eight, and then all the rest of them are already accounted for. So it comes down to, there's no parking.
All right. Thank you. The applicant will be provided an opportunity to respond, so. Other members of the audience wish to speak?
Hello, I'm Jacqueline Boucher, one oh one Pine Street. My biggest concern again is just it's going to be the parking. They have a fifty-person function room, they have fifteen apartments, they have six offices. There's just no room for it over there. And then also the trash, I, how that is set up right there, there's another driveway on the side that's not theirs. They have that building built all the way onto both their property lines, so I just don't see how it's going to work. Marguerite's in general, you know, I see what they do for the community, you know, you know, with the single moms and the domestic violence, but in our area, there's just no room for it. I wish them the best, thank you guys.
Thank you. Other members of the public wishing to speak in opposition or with concern? Please come up.
How are you guys doing today? Ninety-seven Pine Street, Brian Husbrow, my mom just spoke first, Maria. I think it's a good idea, like she said, but I feel like it's a beautiful dream, and it's just like, if they've been there for like, on Palm Street for thirty years plus, I don't understand why now make the push and move to like, try to make this big push now, like, you know, you could have been doing this a long time ago. And my question is to all of you guys, like, I don't know when was the last time you guys were around Pine Street or around Nashville. And it's a beautiful community, honestly. We're all mixed up, all different kinds of races and stuff, kind of like a boiling pot all melted in. Beautiful community. A lot of the other communities not here today. I assure you, we could bring more probably, and I just don't, I don't, I don't see anything positive coming from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public wishing to speak?
Jacqueline Boucher, again, one oh one Pine Street. If you, if you look at the Google map on Pine Street now, there's only nine legal spots that we have for more than four... on Pine Street now, there's only nine legal spots that we have for more than 40 houses. So we, like I said, we really do struggle with that. I just wanna say that. There's only nine spots currently on Pine Street for parking. And some of them, we do double up. I mean, we don't really have a choice, but I just wanted to let you guys know that too. Yeah, and, and we have two sober.
We do need people to speak one at a time. If you need to come back up, I'll let you come back up, but we, we just can't shout back and forth. So please be respectful.
And there is, um, two sober houses now. Um, one that's 12, 12 bedrooms, and the other one is nine. One is, um, 10 Pine Street, yeah. And the other one is down further on the street. But, yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public that wish to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing none at this time? Is there any member of the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay.
Hi there. My name's Hannah Stoller. I'm the executive director of Margarita's Place at 87 Palm Street, and we're the owners of 106 Pine. Um, I really appreciate all who've come and spoken and agree with the statement that we are a community. We've been part of that community for 30 years. And I think, um, in our goal in expanding this is to continue to serve the community, many of those folks who are coming from, um, Pine Street, Palm Street surrounding community as they exist. Um, just some clarifying points on the parking. Um, one for that community room space, that is for group programming of use of families living in the 10 units we have on Palm Street and the proposed units on Pine Street. So that functional usage should not need any additional parking, um, related to that space. It's just so that we have a gathering space. We're currently already doing that programming, um, within our preschool classroom after hours, which is licensed for 14 small children. So you can only fit so many adults in there. And so the idea is to create, um, larger functional space for group programming that's already existing. Um, the office spaces, we do not have grand plans to expand our staff. Like, um, Anne said, we are, um, small and mighty and have about a staff of 10 office staff, um, not counting our childcare staff, um, who, um, would be transferring over from Palm Street into the Pine Street building. Um, but currently there is no parking for those staff. So we are, um, functionally utilizing, um, street parking on Palm Street between nine to five hours. So, um, uh, the overnight staffing is, uh, and residential hours is, um, not an issue there. Um, and then again, to clarify, um, the parking in the units, um, only about 50% of, um, families when they move into Margarita's Place have access to transportation, um, based on the reasons they're moving into Margarita's Place, um, whether they're experiencing domestic violence, um, whether they are, um, have been doubled up with other family members, you name it, the, um, many reasons that families do experience homelessness. Um, uh, we can guarantee even in our, um, three-bedroom apartments that are proposed for each floor, that there will only ever be one vehicle per unit, as there is only one adult. These are units that are dedicated by our program usage for single parents. So, um, there will only be one driver in the household. Um, and again, we appreciate, um, all the feedback and we're dedicated, as we have been for 30 years, to, um, being, um, healthy, supportive community members. Um, uh, wanted to make one clarifying point also around sober homes. I know those have been a hot-button issue and, um, frankly, um, with our neighbors, we have shared some of those concerns because many of our residents are in early recovery and those tend to not be, um, as carefully managed as a nonprofit like ours is. Um, we are, um, staffed, we have cameras, we have, um, limited issues around safety. And so wanted to clarify that our program is not a sober living facility. It's different in its functionality and use and wanna make sure that it's not being lumped in with that categorically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, miss, I'm sorry. Just, um, obviously, as you said, there was, you know, a lot of, uh, testimony you heard about the parking situation, understanding that, you know, just as a base function, there's, there's limited parking in this area. Either with respect to your existing residential facility, or if you can speak to it, um, with respect to a plan for the current facility, understanding your, your comment about the, it's about 50%. Do you have sort of a, a process in place now that you use to manage, let's say, just an unusual circumstance where you, where you go above that 50%? Um, is there a process you have in place to then sort of manage that situation if it arises?
Um, not formally. We, um, help families, uh, seek out other places. The other side of, um, Kinsley is, um, double-sided streets with additional parking and has less traffic. So we help people navigate where there are, um, there are more frequent spots available to them. Our families are parking, um, down, uh, Kinsley, they're parking on Palm Street. And, uh, those who are, um, uh, attending our group programmings who live there are also walking to those. So we wouldn't expect them to be driving over to Palm Street for any of that use, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tom, I don't know if you'd like to come up and, uh, address a couple of the other things that were, were brought up. Uh, before you do though, there was one quick question I had for staff. Um, there, there was a passing comment about notice. Um, could you comment on whether or not the city provided legally required notice?
Uh, we did. It seems like the, the property in question was 103, if I'm not mistaken, if I heard correctly. Um, looking at the, kinda the geometry of the lots in the area that would unlikely have been considered a direct butter under, um, the definition of a butter. Um, however, we're happy to, to go review our records to ensure, um, we can pull all addresses that these notices actually went out to and confirm that all that would have been a butters were treated as such and received due notice.
Thank you, Sam.
Mr. Chair, I, I do actually think maybe 103 did get
I'm the only one.
A butter notification.
Oh, okay.
I think it was 101 and 97, so, um, 103, 103 was legally noticed under the standards for butter notification, uh, which are direct butters to the site, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom, a couple, you probably were taking notes, uh, general parking.
Sure.
Sewer and construction activities. And I, I know there was some commentary from Joe Mandela about giving proper notice for what may be required during the construction phase. So you're free to respond directly.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think Hannah really spoke to the crux of our argument with parking is that this is a unique use, has a much lesser need for parking. Um, we recognize that with this area of the city, as with many areas, uh, in the, uh, in many urban areas, downtown areas, there are, uh, parking struggles. And, um, my experience with that is oftentimes that the existing properties, grandfather properties do not have any parking whatsoever, so completely rely on parking. I, I do know that some of the folks who spoke are, are some of the single-family, uh, units, uh, along, uh, Pine Street. Just looking at aerial photos and, and Google Street Views, I know, um, the woman who spoke at, um, 97 Pine Street talked about having, you know, four spaces in their driveway, uh, for that single-family home. So I think if you looked at some of the other multifamily apartments that are up and down, uh, Pine Street, those are likely the generators of, of that on-street parking, um, situation. Uh, for us, our testimony here tonight is that, uh, our 10 off-street spaces is more than sufficient, uh, for this use and will not only service the, uh, proposed building, but will also help slightly on Palm Street based on the existing staff that currently park there now. Um, I would also mention that, uh, the church, it was asked about the church, I think it's, uh, St. Louis, St. Aleutius, uh, off of, uh, West Hollow Street. That's, uh, under a thousand, uh, feet away. And so we're talking with them about, um, some additional parking spaces. So I think a thousand feet is kinda referenced in other areas of the city in terms of mixed use, in terms of an acceptable, uh, distance to, to look for, uh, additional parking resources in the area. Um, the, the rental agreement, we're, we're under, uh, assigned lease for, for 10 spaces. I do know there are some other properties that appear to use those spaces, but it's a rather large lot there. I can't speak to the specifics about, uh, how many cars, but, uh, I'm gonna go by the assumption that that property owner would not be giving up spaces that, that other folks are, are entitled to or are using, uh, for parking to meet their needs. Uh, Hannah spoke about the community room. It's not really a function room. Uh, this is 90% attended by the current residents, so we're not generating new traffic to the site. Uh, there's no new staff proposed at this time. They're just getting, uh, you know, more up-to-date facilities, actual facilities. Um, with regards to, uh, trash, so, um, instead of the bins, we'll be doing, you know, combined bins that'll be rolled out to the curb on trash day, picked up curbside by a private, uh, trash contractor, not dissimilar to what the city would be doing. So it, it should be a fairly efficient use as it relates to, to trash. And we have, uh, designed the building to tuck that area, uh, to the left side of the building so it wouldn't be, uh, within viewshed. Uh, sewer and water, so the existing Pine Street Motors building has fairly outdated sewer and water services. Sewer and water utilities are available right along our front door on Pine Street. So our plan shows, uh, proposed, uh, improvements to those, those utilities, again, just to service the, the building off of the existing mains. Uh, lastly, just wanted to talk about construction. Uh, so the project does have a, a construction management, uh, firm on board, uh, who has done a lot of work in the city of Nashville. Um, I can think of, uh, very tight urban sites where, uh, construction phasing and, and logistics are very important. And that's what those firms do. I think of larger projects like the High Street Flats or the 249 Main Street Project where these are built in, in urban areas. And they have to make arrangements for that. Uh, and a lot of times that includes securing off-site lots for their parking and logistics for their workers and their machinery. So there's no doubt that, uh, this is going to be, uh, a, a difficult effort, a challenging effort for those, uh, for that, uh, construction company to build this building. But, uh, my testimony would be that it's, it's really done all the time. So it's, it's fairly commonplace. Uh, and they, of course, would need to meet all the city's rules and regulations as it relates to hours of operation, dust control, uh, noise, um, everything that would go into construction. So, uh, Mr. Chair, I think I hit everything in my notes, but let me know if I missed anything.
All right. Um, thank you. Uh, questions from the board? Additional questions? Alderman Cleese, please.
Um, thank you. Um, I don't know, Tom, if you'll be able to answer this or if it'll have to be somebody from Margarita's Place if they're here and could answer it. Um, to help the residents a little bit, is there a way of stipulating that the residents from Margarita's Place would be required to park at the, um, assigned parking and not on the street? Um, I think that would go a long way to, um, um, you know, to help the residents to know that those nine parking spaces that exist on Pine Street are not going to be taken from the, um, the residents there, saying that you have secured that Lemoine Street, um, parking for them, where the residents are not going to be allowed to use that parking. Um, you know, based on my calculation, if you're saying there are 15 units and only 50% of those people, they're only gonna, and I think by your words, you said about seven, that would leave three for the, the, um, employees and that the employees aren't gonna use those parking spaces either to kinda help the residents to do this. I mean, a- as an Alderman and, and for, to the person who said, do you travel around and live in, I've lived in Nashville for over 40 years, and I've traveled around this area for a very long time. And I know what Palm Street and Pine Street and so on. I know how hard it is to park in that area when something is going on at Ash Street and, and so on. I know how hard it is to park there. So, um, and I know what heck they're gonna be living through while you're, while you're doing this, this traffic and so on. So to, to make their lives as easy as possible during this time, um, the neighbors are going to, to live through heck during that time. So to at least let them know that, um, once this is finished and the people are living there, those nine spaces aren't going to be taken by the people that live there because they have an alternate, that the residents aren't gonna be used. I think it would make them feel a little bit better.
I love that idea. And if we had, um, I actually think from a programmatic standpoint, it's, it's helping people, a lot of what we do in our programs is, you know, once we help people establish, um, safety and stability, is working on those skills that help them be great next tenants, um, for landlords. And, um, at a lot of the large apartment complexes around Nashville, you have a parking sticker and you have assigned parking. And so I think that's a very, um, reasonable way to start prepping for that. We would be happy to agree to that. Um, and, um, just to clarify, it's 10 there, but it's, it is two at St. Louis now. Um, and so we're hoping to grow that number. And so, um, we would, um, be happy to put that in a rule. When, uh, we don't have formal leases because we're a program, not a landlord, but, um, all families sign a contract when they move in that has rules that they follow. And so for residents of, um, 106 Pine, we would be happy to make that a rule, that their tenancy, um, they're required to park there with their vehicle, so.
I, I think that would at least help the residents to know that those few nine parking spaces are not going to be taken by this, as I said, because your residents are going to already have a guaranteed parking space.
Sure.
So I think that at least helps. It makes it a little bit more palatable.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly. Um, additional questions from the board? All right. Tom, looks like there are none unless you had anything else to add.
No, yeah, we'd be acceptable to that condition. Um, perhaps no, no residents or staff from the facility shall utilize on-street parking spaces on Pine Street.
Yeah, I, I think that's something we might, I thank you for indicating your, your willingness to accept that. Um, we'd have to discuss when we go into our, our session as to whether or not that's something we could, uh, impose.
We could stipulate, yeah.
But, um, but yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you this evening. All right. At this point, I'm gonna close the public hearing, um, go into our deliberative session. Um, heard quite a bit of testimony. Um, I, I, I think, I think the parking, you know, concerns are, are real and stipulated for the record. Uh, that said, it seems like this applicant is making every reasonable proactive step they can to address it to the best of their ability. Um, the fact that they, they have a, a, a willing partner in a, in a nearby, uh, property that's willing to provide them, um, with spaces, um, uh, may not, may not be perfect, but I, I think for, for this area, that might be, um, as, as good as you can get.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I think the garbage matter can be, can be dealt with, um, just based on other past recent projects in the city. Um, and personally, um, I, I, I don't have, uh, any problem with the, the, the two waivers, but, uh, uh, obviously I'd like to hear from the board, your, your thoughts. Um, Adam, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think, uh, obviously the, the, the big issue here is the parking. I, I agree with Mr. Chair that I think the applicant has made, it sounds like extensive efforts, including, you know, it sounds like securing in, in addition to the 10 spaces on the Lemoine Street lot. It sounds like two streets, or I'm sorry, two parking spaces at the church as well. Um, and I think it's important, as the applicant has indicated, this is a unique use. This is not, if this were 15 sort of standard market rate apartments, I think we would all probably have a different perspective in terms of, you know, the intensity of, of the parking need and, and whether the parking would be sufficient. But, you know, we've got, you know, testimony from the applicant, including the executive director, who obviously has many years of experience, um, working with this program to say, you know, we have a, a precedent, a record that establishes this is the sort of common parking need, you know, per unit that we have. Um, and, you know, I feel comfortable relying on that based on their, you know, long experience, including experience operating an existing residential facility in the same, you know, essentially next door. So, um, I personally feel comfortable that they've demonstrated, you know, that, you know, that they have the, the necessary parking facilities that have, you know, uh, made a necessary effort to secure those, those spaces, um, you know, sufficiently concretely that, you know, that we can, we can rely on that for purposes of a, of a potential approval.
Yeah, uh, I, I would agree. Um, Mr. Varley, I, I guess the one question that came up right at the very end though.
Yeah, I I would agree. Mr. Varley, I I guess the one question that came up right at the very end, though, I I don't know if if this board has the right to compel them to have those assigned spaces, at least with designated numbers or stickers, only because it involves another property owner on on Lamoyne Street who's not part of this application. I I think if that was something they were willing to pursue on their own, and it seemed like they they were potentially, I think that would be fantastic. It sort of helps solidify that that existing lease agreement that they have. But I I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think I I agree with the sense that I don't I don't think we could make it as a condition that folks could not use what are public parking spaces. However, I think the testimony we heard is that they were agreeable to, you know, creating a a an internal rule that would apply to the, you know, the residents of the facility. You know, it's indicated they they sign, you know, what is effectively a contract with respect to the terms of their residency and that they would be willing to make that a term of the contract so that it would be, you know, internal enforcement between Marguerite's Place and their residents. And I that seems reasonable and appropriate if they're willing to do that. I don't necessarily feel like we have to affirmatively make that a condition to plan. I mean, we've we've, you know, received their their commitment to that. I personally would be, you know, satisfied with that without necessarily stipulating something in the in a potential approval.
Yeah, I I I think I would agree with you. I I think they 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 have everything to gain by pursuing that in the manner that they've already, you know, testified to. I would agree not including that as a as an additional condition. But Alderman Klee?
For staff, excuse me. I'm so sorry. For staff. The fact that we're putting this conversation in the minutes, if we don't make it part of a condition, does it help the residents in the future? I trust that Marguerite's Place will do, keep their word. If we didn't make it a condition that they that they will create a contract, I'm so sorry here, that they would make it a condition with their residents. But if we don't make it, it, does it, does it hold any power? If we don't make it a condition?
Effectively, what we would be trying to do is limit their ability to utilize public on-street parking, which we can't do. They've clearly indicated a willingness to develop an internal procedure contract or some other mechanism. We would not have any interest in regulating that, you know, reviewing their documents, checking in on how that's being adhered to. We just wouldn't have the capacity to do that. So in a sense, we are, you know, we are recognizing the concerns around parking that we've heard this evening. You know, the applicant has spoken to how they would help to mitigate that. They've been proactive in securing a a parking lease, which is, you know, well, well done on their on their part. But in terms of, you know, yes, this conversation will be reflected in the minutes. Will it serve as a condition of approval? No. And I also don't think that conditioning this sort of a thing where you're essentially limiting their ability to use public on-street parking is a practice that this board should get into, let alone whether or not it is legal.
It would just reflect badly on them on their reputation if they went back on it. Got it. Okay. I don't expect they would. Thank you.
Thank you.
I trust them to be good people. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I think if there are none, if the board is comfortable with with moving forward, first item that we we would need to act on is the waivers. They have requested two waivers. And would any member of the board be willing to make a motion with respect to granting those two waivers? Mr. Varley? She's encumbered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I would make a motion as to the the two waivers being requested by the applicant. First, as to the requested waiver from section one ninety dash two seventy-nine E E to not depict existing conditions on abutting lots, that that waiver request be approved consistent with the criteria in RSA six seventy-four thirty-six-two N, RSA six seventy-four forty-four three E and section one ninety dash one forty-eight D of the Nasha ordinances, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship and that the specific circumstances and conditions of the the property indicate that the granting of the waiver would be consistent with the spirit and intent of the regulations. And then second, granting a waiver from section one ninety dash one ninety-eight A to not provide any parking on-site, and I would note with with the understanding from the applicant as to the the off-site parking that they've secured, again, consistent with the criteria in RSA six seventy-four thirty-six-two N, RSA six seventy-four forty-four three E and section one ninety-one forty-eight D of the Nasha ordinances, again, with the finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship and that the specific circumstances and conditions of the property here indicate that the approval of the waiver would be consistent with the spirit and intent of the regulation.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Varley to grant the two requested waivers. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, I would ask if any member of the board would be willing to make a motion on granting final approval. And I guess before I put that motion out there, I'll ask the question you did last time, Adam. Staff is, or the dates current within the conditions A through H. Okay, thank you. Would any member of the board be willing to make the motion regarding approval? Mr. Varley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will make that motion as well. And again, I should have noted this in the granting the waivers, but this is as to new business A twenty-four dash zero one seven four, the site plan for Marguerite's Place, Inc. at one oh six Pine Street. And I would like to make the motion to grant a final site plan approval, finding that the the proposal and plan do meet the requirements and criteria in site plan in our section one ninety dash one forty-six D with the subsequent conditions to that approval indicated in paragraphs A through H of the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Varley to grant final site plan approval. Is there a second on that motion? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That concludes the business of case eight twenty-four dash zero one seven four.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question for the board. We have one more regular case, which I think should be fairly short. Are you guys okay powering on or did anyone need a a quick break? I'm 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 most concerned about you, so, okay, okay.
Thank you.
We are, we are in recess for about five minutes or so. We recess at eight fifty-eight. Come back in about five.
We're kind of a...
He's a chocolate lab.
Oh.
Yeah, his name is Buck, but we've already deemed him Buck Wild.
Yeah.
At different points in the day.
I was gonna say, every lab, isn't every lab? No? Oh, my God. I love labs. I I absolutely adore labs. Okay. I'm breathing now.
I have, one time we were live, I had an awful poppy. Like, oh, my gosh, I'm on TV right now having an awful poppy.
It's disgusting. I just had to go blow my nose. It was just, once I did that, it was, everything was fine. Thank you so much for that.
All right. Larry, would you mind one more time? The ceremonial knot, I'm sorry. It's a burden.
The ceremonial knot.
All right. We are back from recess at nine oh four P M. Next item under the under the agenda, case eight twenty-four dash zero one seven five. Property located at forty Groton Road. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review the application and is willing to make a motion as to the board accepting jurisdiction? Ms. Harper?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take jurisdiction of case eight twenty-four dash zero one seven five.
All right. Motion by Ms. Harper. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Board has jurisdiction. Tom, go right ahead, please.
Thank you. Again, good evening. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hanner Swanson, Three Congress Street here in Nashua, here representing the Brothers of the Sacred Heart of Bishop Gerton High School. We're here tonight simply to request a second one-year extension of the proposed athletic field complex to be located at forty Groton Road. This project was initially approved in September of twenty twenty-two with a number of conditions. The project involves two rather large multipurpose synthetic fields, a track with a football field inside of it, about two hundred parking spaces, and then all some really awesome public pedestrian connectivity amenities that will be great when they will be built. As I discussed with the board at the time, in September of twenty twenty-two, the purpose was really to try to advance the design and permitting effort as far as we could during that summer and fall of of twenty-two. We were upfront with the board that the earliest we thought we would ever break ground would be spring of twenty twenty-four. And of course, we're past that. We've still been making some pretty good progress. We've advanced, there was discussion at the time of more of a phased traffic study for the project that went through chip generation, trip distribution. I know Bob is is acutely aware of the various steps that go into a traffic study. We also looked at intersection capacity as you make your way back towards the highway, specifically the main danceable road, Gilson Road, Buck Meadow Road intersection, given the new middle school in the area. And finally, we landed into a a traffic study that was looking at front door improvements, whether or not turn lanes would be warranted into the site. So I'm pleased to report that our traffic consultant, Van Est, did submit that what we hope to be the final phase of that multi-phase study back in June. We understand engineering is is somewhat short-staffed as it relates to the traffic review. And so we have are waiting for further communication. As you can see, we're not breaking ground right now or next month, so we're kind of allowing that process to play out. But we do think we're we're at the finish line as it relates to traffic study. And one of the big conversations with whether or not we would need off-site improvements, which at least according to our consultant, we do not. There were two other big conditions at the time. During the survey of the property, we found that there's a section of the nineteen seventy, seventeen ninety-nine layout of Old Groton Road that creates a surplus piece of land at the corner. It's shown as a triangle in the upper-left part of the screen. That created all sorts of complications for us. We were a year and a half into the DOT surplus land acquisition process. I think when we were before this board about a year ago, we felt we were somewhat close. It appears not to be the case. Attorney Prohmann is actively pursuing that, and we hope to have resolution soon. Following that action, we would then proceed with a petition for street discontinuance for that old layout. It was involved in a similar process for the Terrell Farm Residential Community across the street. As you know, going through the Board of Aldermen process for that takes a couple of months as well. And so the reason I bring all that up in terms of the DOT and the right-of-way discontinuance is the board was kind enough to amend the original approval, the language related to those two conditions, to allow those to occur prior to the issuance of a building permit rather than signing of the final plan, which would give Bishop Gerton the option at their risk to proceed with the earthwork and initial clearing for the project, again, as those somewhat long lead processes are completed. So we're here tonight asking for a two-year extension, more time to complete those conditions, and then more importantly, to continue in their capital campaign efforts, which have been ongoing to to fundraise for this project. So at this time, our goal would be to start at least the first phase of the project, either later this fall, winter, or certainly early next spring. But that schedule at this point is is a goal and is somewhat fluid. So that's what I have here tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any any questions.
All right. Mr. Varley?
Yeah, just a quick question because the staff report we have says the request is for a one-year extension. And I thought, I just heard you say you're requesting two years?
I'm sorry. I meant to say I'm requesting a second one-year extension.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other members of the board? All right. Seeing none at this time. Or, Ms., are you here to speak in favor or opposition to this project?
She's from Inkling.
No?
No.
Okay. All right. One last chance for the board?
Actually, I just had one quick question, maybe for staff, actually. What, um, just in thinking about, you know, possibly not being able to complete the project in the next year, as, as far as applying for another extension beyond the three years, I, I can't remember. We've talked about this before. Is there a limit as to the number of extensions?
Depends on the circumstances, really. You know, the circumstances here are kind of unique, you know, versus another project where people just come back and repeat the same thing over and over.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Okay.
So I guess, unless you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, there is no hard and fast. We cannot do a fourth extension. There's nothing like that. There has been tradition, there has been habit, but I think Scott's point is well taken that there are always unique extenuating circumstances. Anytime an extension is requested, Tom's done a good job in articulating those for this instance.
Yes.
So.
I think, at least in my experience, a couple of occasions where we have had your requests come back multiple times, I think we've tried to look at, you know, whether there are anything, whether there's anything unique in the circumstances where you'd say there have been changes, say, in the requirements that would be applied to a particular plan if it were coming before us now that are material that would cause us to say, gee, we need to, you know, rethink whether we can grant an extension of those, you know, existing conditions and standards, or do we need to sort of reopen this? I don't think we have anything of that nature right now around, around this plan. But I think that's, that's sort of the way it's come up before. We had to consider multiple year extensions.
Okay. I just also wanted to be completely transparent with, with the applicant also, so.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. It's anecdotal, but I'll, I'll testify to Tom's timeframe with New Hampshire DOT. It just, it's, it's a long, it's a long process. I, even aside from that, I wouldn't have an issue with this one. Again, to Adam's point, taking them on a case-by-case basis, it doesn't seem like it's intentional delay on the applicant. Sometimes the circumstances dictate, so. But yeah, it's my, my general thoughts on it, so. Any further questions from Tom or staff? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's like, no, no one else is here in the audience, so I think we'll, we'll close the public hearing. I'm, I'm okay with this. Be interesting to see it built, honestly. It's, it's a nice area of town. So I, I'd be voting in favor of granting the extension. So I guess with that said, I would be looking for a recommendation or a motion by a member of the board regarding granting that extension. Alderman Cleese?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to put forward a motion to grant the extension as requested.
All right.
Is there a particular format?
I would basically, perhaps, if you could, if you could amend your motion to state that it meets the requirements.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Outlined.
And it meets the requirements outlined in the site plan NRO one ninety dash one forty-six D.
And with?
With the, is it the three stipulations?
Three stipulations?
The three stipulations, yes.
Perfect. As indicated in the staff report.
In the staff report, yes.
All right. Excellent. All right, we have a motion by Alderman Cleese. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Have a good evening. All right. The fun stuff. Other, other business. First item, review the tentative agenda, projects of regional impact. Does any member of the board have an opportunity to review upcoming projects and like to make a motion regarding applicability of regional impact? Ms. Harper, please.
Yes, in regards to the tentative agenda, I'd like to make a motion that there are no proposals of regional impact.
All right, motion by Ms. Harper. There are no projects of regional impact. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, referral from the Board of Alderman regarding O dash zero, is it O dash two four dash zero three seven? Mending land use code regarding municipal changing signs. Sam, would you like, like to have a couple of minutes?
Sure, I'll try to keep it to one.
All right.
So this, as you may recall, a while back, there was a change to the ordinance. Really, this was one ninety, one ten point one, establishing a process for which municipal EMCs or changing signs could be created through, or permitted, rather, by a special exception by the ZBA. This builds on that, and it also adds in some language in one ninety ninety-seven, really just housekeeping things. But one ten point one has been further expanded to include standards for municipal signs. In some cases, these are a bit more stringent in overriding what is currently allowed for changing signs. Size, for example, I believe fifty-two square feet is permitted, whereas municipal changing signs would be limited to forty. But this does then go into some further details, you know, really dialing in exactly what those standards are and would be, and of course, you know, through the process, would be permitted in all districts, subject to special exception approval from the ZBA.
All right. Personal question, just because I've seen it in the past. Every once in a while on Amber Street, the intersection of Somerset Parkway, you'll have the trailer-mounted variable message board sign. Police Department now hiring. Would that be included in this, or is?
Excellent question. No, because that trailer is in the right-of-way. The land use code regulates everything that is on private or, in this case, city-owned property, but not right-of-way.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. All right. Other questions for Sam? Alderman Cleese, please.
It's not so much a question. I think it's more of an explanation. It's, it's more signs, because it would be like city signs. It would be more like a sign put up in front of, like, DPW. Am I, am I accurate?
That's a fine hypothetical.
Or, or a sign that might be put up in front of City Hall.
Sure.
Yeah, so it would be more, it would be more something of that, of that nature. It'd be more of a permanent sign within a building. But as, as Sam had put, it would not be necessarily something that's in the right-of-way or electronic sign that would be put out on the street that, that said, you know, caution, you know, road closed or something of that nature. That, that would be more accurate, correct?
And this ordinance language does limit it to governmental-related speech. It goes as far to limit speech such as, say, a local business wanted to sponsor a city event. Their logo, their name would not be allowed to be included in that. Really informational, you know, important messages that the government needs to convey to the public. That would be the purpose of these signs.
Yes.
And for our First Amendment academics out there, the government does have the ability to limit its own speech voluntarily through ordinance as typically you cannot write content-based regulations as they relate to speech. Signs are a form of speech, so for the record, we're able to limit ourselves.
All right. Other questions or comments from the board? All right, seeing none, I think we'd be looking for a motion to, Sam, make a favorable recommendation regarding O dash two four, O three seven, is that?
If you so choose, yes.
Okay. All right, so, Ms. Harper?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for a favorable referral to the Board of Alderman in regards to zero dash two, actually, O dash two four dash zero three seven.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Harper regarding a positive referral regarding the above referenced case. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, Sam, we're gonna, we're gonna skip number three tonight?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Okay.
All right, save, save your questions on inclusionary zoning procedures. All right, next item on the agenda, the consent agenda. Final approvals for case eight twenty-four dash zero zero three eight, property located at one fifteen Northeastern Boulevard. Case eight twenty-four dash zero one two one, property located at one sixteen Elm Street. And case eight twenty-four dash zero one two three, Cabot Drive and eighteen Boylston Street. Would any member of the board be willing to make a motion regarding all consent agenda items that we have before us this evening?
Hey, can I just ask a quick question of staff, which is, what is the, what is the nature of the motion we're making? Because it's, we're essentially confirming that the conditions have been satisfied necessary to move the approval from conditional to final, is that?
Sure. So these memos are essentially staff certifying to the board that the applicant has met the conditions of approval needed to affect final approval. So the motion would be basically to accept and place on file. They're effectively, you know, communications being conveyed to the board by staff.
Okay. If I may ask one other quick follow-up. Just, just because this is something, I think this is only the second time we've, we've done this, so is it, it is okay to accept them en masse, correct?
That is the, the consent agenda motion, yes.
Should, should we have, would it make sense just to have a line so we don't forget, like, to Adam's point, like, exactly stipulating what we're doing, like?
Oh.
Or is, is that, is that overkill? Like, I'm not trying to create more, more work, but just so it's part of the verbal record. I don't, not yet, you know, trying to overly complicate it, but.
Yeah, and I only ask because, I mean, you know, in other, you know, sort of consent agenda scenarios, you would still be, the motion would be to approve the items on the consent agenda. I just wanted to clarify, I don't think we're really approving anything here. So, Sam, I think that's helpful clarification that we're sort of accepting and putting on file.
We usually just read the, we usually just read the, the subjects and then say, approve and basically just put on file.
Sam runs a tight ship. I want to make, make sure I'm, I'm, I'm conforming.
Captain Sam.
All right, appreciate the discussion. Thank you. So, all right. Mr. Varley, if you wish to, to take that one.
Sure.
Take it in any manner which you, which you please.
Yeah, absolutely. So I would like to make a motion as to cases eight twenty-four dash zero zero three eight, eight twenty-four dash zero one two one, and eight twenty-four dash zero one two three. That all three of those, that the reports provided by staff be accepted in that form and placed on file.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Getting near the end, folks. Discussion items. Twenty twenty-five meeting deadlines. Believe I took a quick look at this earlier. It looks like all the changes that we had suggested at, at the last meeting have been incorporated. If there's agreement, because we'd be looking for a motion to accept the twenty twenty-five meeting and deadline dates as, as noted in our packet. Any member of the board willing to make that motion?
Mr. Chair? I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five meeting and deadline date as presented in our packets.
All right, motion by Ms. Harper. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. Sam, I think the, the last three items under discussion are gonna kind of steer your way. Did you want to kind of take those as a group or one by one rather?
Yeah, none of, well, this, number two might actually require, or at least your input. So Mr. Green at our last meeting had brought forth the idea of placing the approval criteria, as you find them in your packets in the little laminated forms, for, you know, our various types of applications, be they subdivision site plan, conditional use permit, on a more accessible part of the website. So if you click the link, you'll see this is a screenshot of a, essentially a draft webpage on the planning board page where anyone could go to the planning board page and navigate over to the sidebar and just click the link that says, here are the approval criteria. I believe Mr. Green's intent there was just to, you know, present the public with, here are the things that we must consider when we are deciding whether or not to approve a, a given application. And if this is something that you like, we'd be happy to make this webpage go live, I believe is the operative terminology.
May I?
Certainly, Alderman Cleese.
I, I think it's, I think it's a grand idea. I, I think the more information you put to help the public understand any of the criteria and so on, the better. We have this at our fingertips when we're looking at things, but I think anything that helps the public, it gives to the transparency of it. And I think it was a good idea of Mr. Green's, so I, I a hundred percent agree with him on it.
My, my general thoughts, I mean, obviously, I don't, we're never trying to hide anything. Whether or not it'd be interesting, if you can, if you can track clicks, I don't know how many folks are actually. I think most people unfortunately find out the procedure when they come here in opposition of a particular project. I, I think that's unfortunately the primary education method, and I don't mean that to be critical. It's, it's just, I think that's sort of the way it, it works, but if, if there's a way, again, in, in terms of general transparency to at least have that readily available, I, I've got no, again, I, I'm, I'm all for it. So. I don't know if there's, there's other thoughts, Maggie or Larry or?
I always have a million, I always have a million opinions, but, but, I mean, one of the things that, and I, and I spoke to it earlier is that we're, we're bound by land use law, and, and that's, that's just kind of the way our hands are tied. But if we were one hundred percent bound, bound by land use law, they wouldn't need us because the law would be the law and there would be no interpretation of it and so on. But there is that little wiggle room of subjectivity, of, of, of criteria that says that it will do no harm. And, and that's kind of where we lie. Is it, is it doing harm? Is it causing a negative effect on it? And that's kind of where we, we kind of stand in. So that's one of the things that I, when I talk to people and I say that, and I say, so look at the criteria, see where, where it does. So to have something like this where they can go and they better understand, we're not going to give them this entire book of, of land use law. I appoint them to one ninety. Quite often I do. I, I have pointed them to, to those type of things and so on. But for them to understand some of those type of things, I think it is helpful. You're not going to find clicks. You, you really aren't because people aren't going to do that extra homework. But if I can point it to them and say, hey, go look there, it does kind of even help us for them to understand that. So I think it's nice to have it there.
It can't hurt.
No.
Right.
It doesn't. It doesn't.
Exactly.
It, it adds to our transparency.
No, I'm, I'm good with that. So if there's, are there any other questions for, for Sam or any further? So if there's, are there any other questions for Sam, or any further discussion on the board? I guess, taking Sam's advice, we, for the record, we can certainly entertain a motion for, I guess, consenting or agreeing to approve, to post the approval criteria on our website. Any member of the board willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes, please.
Motion by Alderman Cleese to post the approval criteria on the city's planning board website. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, Sam, you and your staff, thank you for going through that, appreciate it. So now, I think I'll officially turn it over to you for the last two items on the agenda, if you wanted to take a few minutes.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. So these last two items are called educational opportunities. The New Hampshire Municipal Association every year puts on a land use law conference, typically a Saturday in November. This agenda is actually, it looks quite excellent, I will say, from the content, really geared directly towards planning and zoning boards, and if you know, you'll see there are concurrent tracks, you know, planning and zoning at each session, and really, you know, if a member of a board goes, you would expect them to obviously follow their respective track. So I bring this up simply because, for, well, for two reasons, one, you know, laws change, you know, occasionally, to some degree, and it's important to stay on top of those things, and also, refreshers are always very good to have, particularly in light of some of how challenging some of our recent applications have been, you know, it's important to know the powers of the board and the extent of their authority, and being really up to, you know, just knowing those comfortably. And I think that this presents an excellent opportunity for a refresher or to learn something new, as laws have changed. So this is, you know, up to you, this is voluntary, we certainly encourage participation to the extent that you are able, we will cover the cost of registration, we'll assist with registration as needed, so I just wanted to put that out to the board as a, as an opportunity.
I'm sorry, Sam, and what date exactly do you know?
I apologize. That would be.
November 16th.
Oh, the 16th, yes.
Yes, the 16th, yes, 9:00 to 3:15 PM.
It's a Saturday.
In Manchester.
Southern Hampshire University.
Yes.
Sam buried the lead, it is, it is a Saturday.
It is Saturday.
But it's, you're already, you're already a volunteer, so there's an additional opportunity to volunteer.
Looks like there's a meal involved.
Well, that's usually, that's usually a big sell. And the good news is, we do not have a meeting the 14th, so it's not like you're pulling double duty in the same week, so, but no, if there is interest, obviously, please follow up, Sam, reach out to you directly.
You can just let us know via email, and we'll review.
I am interested.
Excellent, well, thank you, Maggie, we can follow up.
Thank you.
Related is number four, the OPD Planning Board Handbook. This is a publication that the State Office of Planning puts out every year, again, refreshing based on land use law changes. I am linking this separately from the conference as, this is, you know, a static document, reference document, really, conference is, you know, its own opportunity. Two things to note here, the first of which is that the state has come forth with a housing champion designation. It's a formula designation, where if you reach, you know, a number of points on the scoring rubric, you receive the designation, that allows your community to pursue independent grants. One example would be the per-unit grant, which has been used before as part of the Invest New Hampshire funds, these are our funds, and really being used as a way to incentivize communities to welcome and help build workforce housing. Essentially, the per-unit grant is, you know, $10,000 per workforce or eligible unit built within the prior fiscal year, which we do quite a bit of, and, you know, it's a fair chunk and change when all that adds up. But to be eligible and to be, you know, competitive in that, we would have to have this housing champion designation. Now, part of the criteria is board training, frequency of board training, and also, so that's why I mentioned the conference, and providing this reference document as well. There is also bonus points in the criteria if everybody, or the majority of our members on both the planning and zoning board pass their respective OPD handbook tests. So you'll see in that link that there, that at the bottom of the page, there is a link to take a test, totally optional, just know that your successful passage would help us in becoming a housing champion. So I imagine you would get a little certificate if you clicked the link with certificate, that is how you would get credit as well, so if you so choose. The top link on the page is to the handbook, it's lengthy, but, you know, Ctrl-F, find the things that you're interested in, I've read through it earlier this week, it's quite comprehensive, very informative, I took the test myself, I enjoyed it, I did not score 100%, and I learned a couple of things, but I did, I will say, I had a passing grade, which I would hope so, but it's very interesting, and it covers a lot of ground, and it's a little eye-opener, so I do hope that you would take the time to review the handbook and take the test if you are so willing.
Sam, tell them the best part, you can take as many times as you want.
That's right.
I was gonna say.
And if you do, if you do get their certificate, please forward that, so we can incorporate it into our application.
But every time you fail, there's an email that goes to Sam.
Oh, no.
That's why you do planning board tests with no certificate first. That does not require name or email address, so you do that one multiple times until you get it right, yeah.
It's anonymous.
That was anonymous, and then you finally do the last one.
Very good, yes. So that is, that is all I have, but I think it's just important to note that, you know, the land use regulatory environment does change on occasion, and as Nashville continues to build out, things get more challenging, not easier, and, you know, as long as we are making decisions that are defensible, hopefully we can keep our staff out of court for procedural remands.
That's the important one.
Yes.
All right, well, Sam, thank you for written on those topics this evening. If there's nothing else, next meeting for us is November 7th, so, happy Halloween, and I'd love, I'd love a motion to adjourn. Ms. Harper?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at 9:38 PM.